You may be seated. I will then start with the introductions for some of you to understand who we are. We are the members of the Portfolio Committee on Environment, Forestry and Fisheries, coming from the Parliament of the Republic of South Africa, that is your National Assembly. In our midst, I will first start by introducing the honourable members of Parliament. Then I will also introduce the support staff. We have our distinguished guests, the leadership of the Koison leadership, I will introduce them to you as well, and then our councillors that are in our midst. Then let me start from my left hand side. I want to introduce my colleague, his honourable Brian, he is coming from this province, the Western Cape, he is a member of the Portfolio Committee. Can you greet the honourable, our people, honourable Brian? You have seen him, eh? And then next to me here on my right hand side, I want to introduce my colleague all the way from Gauteng Province, he is also the whip of this Portfolio Committee, his honourable Modisa. Then next to him, I have a colleague coming all the way from the Eastern Cape, she is a member of this Portfolio Committee, his honourable Gancho. And then the colleague at my extreme right, he is also the son of the soil, he is coming from this province, his honourable Porson. I know we are joined here by the Koison Traditional House, led by the Senior Paramount Mohat van der Skaif, she is in our midst, you can see her, she is seated there. And then we have Queen Fazin van der Skaif, and then we have Nusu from the Paramount Chief Konala's Botas well. And then we also have the Nozukile Traditional House, that is led by Chief Noguzile Alisia Bayar. This is how diverse our culture and tradition is. We sincerely appreciate your coming, the Koison Traditional Leadership in our midst, including the leadership of the other house. Then we have got a team of support staff in our midst, and then this was not going to be possible without their support. I will start from the committee section. I want to introduce the committee secretaries that are here in our midst. I will start with Ms. Shileka Maduvela, can you rise and greet? And then I will introduce Mr. Sivekoma Scolay. Then introduce Mr. King Kunene. And then introduce Mr. Anel Kavingets. Also there we have our committee researcher called Mr. Ntandla Giniza. We have our committee assistants in our midst, they are the ones that are busy assisting you outside there. We have Darin, we have Tandukola Botoman, Nozuko and Priscilla, I think you might have seen them as you entered there, they were busy assisting you with registration. And then from our language services, I have colleagues with me here. Can I start by introducing Mr. Wuntumani? Mr. Benjamin Nimbo. Ms. Peln Bolakwa, she is our sign language interpreter, there she is. And Mr. Gavin Obelhoser, also is our sign language interpreter, there he is. And then we have Kolokile Korat. Then we have our PCS, Marion, am I correct, we are live on DSTV4A today, we are also live on Twitter, and then Facebook, YouTube, those are the parliamentary social media that are here. So, that's Marion, Ditlof there is for Sound and Vision, he has already raised his hand. And then we have got Abel Mputing, he is our writer, I wonder where he is, there he is. And then we have got Mr. Clamarison Govend, who is our radio broadcasting person, there he is. And then we have got Nozankazi Mlongeni from Branding Site, there she is. And then we have Soletemba Kossisile, the guy that is holding the camera and taking pictures of you, there he is. Akonandela from TV Broadcasting. And then we have our, she has just got promoted, I don't know what is her title anymore, Ms. Govend, where are you? There she is, she used to be our media license officer, but now I think she is in PR or something. She has just said with us that she got promoted. Then we have got men and women from our protection service, majority of them might be outside, you are there, I want to mention you by names. Claudine, raise your hand and say hi. Where is Dion? Dion is outside. Ashwin Mas, outside. Internamen, there you go. Pam, there she is. Sonia, outside. Constance, outside. George, outside. Lucky, I saw him outside. Peter, there he is at the corner, he is one of the elderly one, eh? Nozuko, outside. Daniel, there, outside. And then Muhotu, Mudas, outside. So, this is the team of men and women who have made this event to be possible. Then, let me then introduce your local leaders, but you know them. We have a councillor Archie Klass, he is a PR councillor over Beck District. And then we have got councillor Eugene Diaz, Overstrand Municipality. We can't see you, there you go. Councillor Ladies Pumla, Swellendam Municipality. And then councillor Julian Mathaisen, Swellendam Municipality. Then, that's it, this is our public rep and the parliamentary staff members that are here. So, and you people, you are welcome, thanks for coming. Then, having said that, now that you know who we are, we can ask councillor Archie Klass from the Overbeck District Municipality to welcome us. Over to you councillor.
Thank you, thank you so much, Chairperson. Also, welcome to you and your committee, you are in the Overbeck District Municipal Area. We've got four B municipalities, where we are now, we are in Overstrand Municipality, which I'm sure you will come to for whale watching. It is the best, it is the best in the world when it comes to whale. Many people do not understand that what we see here, very close and take pictures with, cannot be seen anywhere in the world. So, we are in the beautiful Overstrand. Here, the person that was standing up is actually the fire chief, he is our fire chief, Lester Smith, if you can stand up again. He is here, but we've got the whole staff and officials from Overstrand that are here for the Q and A sessions. Also, we've got Swellendam Municipality, which is here, you've already introduced the councillors. We've got quite a diverse pool of different people that are here, but I will say about that at the end. Swellendam is better known, Chairperson, for it remains one of the organic towns. We haven't changed it, it is still as original as you can ever find it. And it's one of, it's rated in South Africa as one of the best municipalities, we are very proud of it. Also, we've got Deer Vadeskloof Municipality, that is the area that receives you as you came up the mountain from Cape Town, that is Deer Vadeskloof Municipality, it's our biggest municipality, it covers a very huge area. Traditionally, especially when it comes to the Koi, in actual fact even the sun, when it comes to history, it's very rich in history, the same as Swellendam by the way. So, most of the leaders there, that's why you have representation thereof that are here. And also, we've got Cape Algalas Municipality, which you should know, is the most southern tip of Africa, is actually here in Overbeck. But generally, the kind of audience you've got here, you've got from pastors who normally go to our, to our mountains to pray, and there is quite a number of conflicts when it comes to the actual law and them praying and making some fire when they are there. You've got an audience when it comes to the initiation school, right around the Overbeck. Not only you've got both Kosa, I've seen some Shobi leaders here from initiation school, I've seen also Sutus, which is very significant, Chairperson, in the sense that since the new democracies, Sutus haven't had any initiation school here, it's only this year that Sutus will be coming back, we are very excited about that. It's good to also have the leaders of Sutus who are part of us here. We've also got, you've already recognized the Koi leaders, we do have even the Kosa leaders, I've seen the House of Traditional Leaders, it's not official yet here since we are busy with the legislation, but the leaders who are leading on ground, they are here, it's good to see them from the Kosa side. And I must say that there is quite a number of people who are bush cutters, I've seen quite a number of them who interact with our bush, who cut the bush, and they are very interested in the legislation and also giving an input on it. And lastly, I do want to say that, when you announce, even when you came out of the car chair, you wouldn't have recognized me because I'm an ordinary person, but I recognize you from afar, because we really appreciate the work you do and everything you do. We appreciate that you've brought your best delegation when it comes to here, and indeed we are ready, we are ready to engage you. The mayor of the District Municipality, Alderman Saki Franken, have asked that I do the word of welcoming, thank you so much.
It's like you prepared what to say, though we caught you off guard. Thank you so much, councillor Klass, but I could see you are the way you welcomed us, that we didn't recognize you does not affect, that's why you are seated here in front. Okay, then we are proceeding. Thank you so much for the warm welcome, councillor Klass. I've introduced everybody and forgot to introduce myself, I don't know why. My name is Faith Mutambi, I'm the Chairperson of the Portfolio Committee on Environment, Forestry and Fisheries. Then we are proceeding with our program. Honourable Brian, this is home, can you then share with our delegates the overview of the National Feld and Forests Fire Amendment Bill and the purpose of this public hearing? Over to you, honourable Brian.
One, two, oh, there we go, okay. All right, good morning everybody, and apologies again for starting late. Thank you so much to everybody who has come out today. It's absolutely wonderful to be up in this municipality, I personally have spent quite a lot of time up here over many years, it's a wonderful, wonderful place to be and to visit, and all of us were commenting driving through from Hermanus to Horston this morning at how clean and neat and tidy everything is, and we'd just like to thank councillor Klass and the teams who keep this place looking so neat and tidy and clean, and it really is wonderful. Okay, so today we are going to be engaging you as the community on the Feld and Forest Fire Amendment Bill. So, there is already a piece of legislation that exists, which is the Feld and Forest Fire Act, and this amendment bill seeks to amend certain sections of that act. There is documentation available that I think has been handed out already to some of you, but I'm just going to very briefly go over the three key points, sorry, the six key points within the proposed amendment bill.
I wanted to check in terms of translation, do we have African speaking people here? Can I see a show of hands? Those of you who can't hear English, do you speak English? Are you fine with English? You are all fine? And then the Kosa speaking people, can I see a show of hands? Do you want interpretation or you are fine with the English? So, should we interpret what he's saying or you can hear what he's saying? But when you are to participate, you are free to speak in any language, we've got interpretation services. Do you want him to be interpreted or you are okay?
All right, so I will speak a little bit, and then there'll be interpretation as we go. So, we are going around the country as a committee, and so far we've been to eight of the nine provinces, the Western Cape is the last of the nine provinces. Do you want to do it like that, or you want me, okay, all right. So, the six key focus areas of this amendment bill, the first one is to amend and to insert definitions, that's just your kind of preamble to the act, the bill. Then we are providing for the facilitation of the formation of fire protection associations by a municipality or traditional council. Thirdly, we'll be compelling a municipality, a state-owned enterprise, a public entity or other organs of the state that own land to join those fire protection associations. We will extend the powers of entry, search, seizure and arrest to peace officers and traditional leaders. And finally, amend the title of the act from what it currently is to the National Feld Fire Act, taking out the word forest. Great. So, today is your opportunity to have your say. I'll hand back to the chairperson, and they will then explain how you are going to go about making your contributions today. Thanks very much.
African speakers, are you covered or you weren't? You are covered? Eh? Can the person responsible for African translation do this translation as well? Summarize? Is it still you?
The Department of Bush Bowl, Fishery and Ombreungs. And it noah give fund that. Why is a gings much ago and gebrung board and he had a good vet. The head of a vet, that's chapping to send it, that's secure a place that the head of a vet, they unsleet me and he had a good vet new. But that, as good for van da re reden, it now the department, the committee again ader, met secure a ways agings. That a ways agings, well said, that's secure a, bescrevings, what mothe, eh, eh, opien kant gezit ward, and secure a bescrevings, but might what mothe, pay gevoog ward, and the head of a vet. And eh, it's a, it's a, and a dinger, what you, what for a still is there, the department, and the committee, is the stiching, funny, boss brand, eh, boss, boss brand, beskeremings. So, that a beskeremings, verenagings, mothe stich ward. The municipality and the lawyers, van the traditional, van the traditional lawyers, mothe magge ge ward, omah, the stiching, van da re, boss brand, verenagings, beskeremings, eh, 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 the form, you, formulate, that what you know, as the FPAs, many a mister verwested, na na, that is the FPAs, that's the end of any dole, van the ways agings, what angebrung mothe ward. And another thing what mothe, what eh, what eh, what eh, what the ways agings eh, forstel, is that, that a verenagings, that's a leg, stiches, and mothe le, geresreer ward. And further, the municipality, as well as the traditional lawyers, mothe magge ge ward, om togang te kree, and pleke, what they're, misskin, van mening is, that's mense, what no, the oorzaan van die brand is, what no, werke, wek kreep. They're mothe togang kree, they're can, obreek, as the blech, slit is, and mothe mothe ingone, and eh, keeke, what they're noah, as they're is, find what they're done, eh, to, to, role gespeel, and the brand of the fear, then can they let eh, confiscate and arresteer, and did it noah is. And further, ook the titel van die, the vet, mothe ook verander ward, that's now the last step, wees, what no, geton mothe ward. And now the folgen, was hal gebeer, the voerzeter, zal no, for ons, for alie mense, kans ge, om they're, insitte te ge, voorstel eh, maak, bijdra, te maak, and the ways aging van ihre vet. As was hal bij a ge, provincies, headiglik, that is no, the neende provincie, what is no, bij, eh, eh, be, be, be sook vandaag, that is no, the laste een, so that's the no, yellow kans, om insitte te maak, and the parliament, and voorstel ge, that in the vet, ons ding, dit is dit, and that, what mothe gewaisag ward, and this, us ma And this is what we make the proposal, this is not the example I make. This is another, the things that we have expected from EAF. This is now the opportunity today, to let us go in and present it to them. The president will now give the procedure, how we should now present it.
You hear? You are earning your money today, sir. For working hard. Thank you so much for that translation. I think moving forward, you are the only one speaking Africans. Who else? So let's do it this way. If he speaks in English, let's get the closer interpreter and the African interpreter so that people don't lose track. Then they feel they are part of the meeting, right? That's how we are going to do it now. Having said that, let me ask my colleague, Honorable Modise, to share with you the procedure that you are going to follow as you start to make your oral submission. That will also include those of you who don't want to speak here. He will tell you how you are going to do your written submissions.
You did both of them? Oh, okay. It looks like some people will start working for their money. Chairperson, thank you very much. Greetings, honorable members. Greetings to the parliament staff, all of you. Greetings to the esteemed guests, the most beautiful people of the Overbeck district. Your councillors, the traditional leadership and all of you. I must mention upfront that when an interpreter does not interpret properly, I'll interpret myself. [speaking African] Right. My task is really very simple. It is to explain how we are going to participate. This is not our meeting, this is your meeting. Now, we want to invite you to speak comfortably at your own language, at your own pace. But having your own pace means we must set the rules. Now, the chairperson of the session and the chairperson of the committee is going to start by noting ten hands from the left. Now, all the ten names, hands that are noted will come and occupy the seats in the middle. Now, arriving at the middle chairs, the first thing you do is to register your name. After registering your name, when you are invited to speak on the mic, the first thing you are going to do is to introduce yourself. For instance, my name is Ntibimo Dize. I am from Woduan in Overbeck Municipality. Or if you represent a particular institution, it being a fire protection association, it being a traditional authority, whatever institution you are representing, please inform us. The second one is to tell us which institution you are representing. Yeah, you are doing very well. The third one would then be to tell us whether you support the bill or do not support the bill. And then each speaker is going to be given maximum five minutes. Then the chairperson will come to the right after the ten of the left has spoken. She'll then come to the right. Yeah, but the, but the forester can end the longer can probably to answer by the right. Alright, so that is how we are going to deal with today's meeting.
[speaking African]
I'm on fire today, Chair. I'm on fire. We are fighting fire today, so I'm on fire. Okay, the last thing, chairperson, is that there are people who might not feel comfortable to come and address us on the mic. Now, Ms. Chileka Madubela has the forms. But people who want to do written submissions, those who don't want to address us here, they can meet Chileka, Chileka will give them the forms and they can fill the forms and make their submissions there.
Then can the person here so form create and then script and so be Chileka.
Fourth second, I guess the friede, by the time.
Here, Benier. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
By the time.
We are here to listen to you.
[speaking African]
And I deliberately didn't introduce one team until we reach this stage. I deliberately not introduced one team of colleagues until we reach this stage. I just want to launch them. I just want to launch them now.
[speaking African]
And then I want them to listen to you attentively. These are the colleagues from the Department of Forestry, Fisheries and Environment. Mr. Winston Smith, can you stand up so that you greet our people?
Stand up for a brief moment.
I want to introduce only one, Mr. Winston Smith. Mr. Winston Smith, stand up. Mr. Kaki Somuno, stand up so that people may see you.
[speaking African]
Ms. Bouisat Di Bongo, stand up so that people can see you. Ms. Shumani Zivani, stand up so that people can see you. And Nion Kotsa, stand up so that people can see you.
[speaking African]
[speaking African]
These are the departmental staff members that will be listening to you attentively and then noting your concerns on the bill. And then we have Mr. Zonisalonana, who is the PLO for the Deputy Minister. Where are you? Just raise your hand so that they can see you. This function is delegated to the Deputy Minister. And then if there's any other political issues that needs the Deputy Minister's attention, you will be noting that. And then I want to also introduce the all-rounder, that's the Minister's PLO. Mr. Gift Mgoni, where are you?
Mr. Gift Mgoni?
The beauty about it, this is also the Minister's constituency. So we sort it. I wonder where he is, but he's around, he's around. So he's so close to your issues in this area. So I'm trying to raise this because yesterday somebody made the accusation to us, who we are, to say, we just listened, then after this, we are going to throw pens away. That's why we brought all these team members. So that whatever issues that you are going to raise, then they get noted. We've also created a platform in our committee. Whatever issues that we experience when you raise, whether they are government-related, when we go back to parliament, we call meetings for people to then respond to the issues that you have raised with us. Because we believe that we are parliament, we are the last level of governments, then of the states. Then if you can raise issues with parliament and they don't get attended to, where else could you go?
So that we can trust, that it was not true, that we were wronged, that we, the bush, what we are doing to us, not trusted, not the regieren. And it's here to listen precisely what the people trusted to us to, and that trusts that we, not the regieren, specific and correct, so that the people that we are doing to us.
Thank you so much. Can we start from this side? You raise your hand and you come to this chest in the middle.
The reason why we want to just make an example of Knoflukskral as a community where there resides about 4,000 people is due to the huge contestation on Knoflukskral.
Da war uns blae, da es umpe vier vier dessen Mensa wa da wun, en eh krad namens die gut andal Mensa wa da wun.
The other reason why we want to use Knoflukskral as an ancestral land but as an example, besides the contestation, but it's also using that as an example because we are in this space of forestry space.
Uns eh eh purde re area waren uns blae en die Gemeinschaft wa da blae, uch es da wuch den wurbe.
We often hear the not good stories of Knoflukskral, but may this be noted to everybody in here that there are such phenomenal stories where we grow our own food to determine our self-governance.
Eh es nie alte wat mens gueh stories were van uns area waren uns blae nie, ma evel uch gaah mel, dat uns het ons ehe goed post wat ons da wund en alles wat ons da eet voer.
Which leads me to the following three questions.
Dat het mij geleen na die volgende drie vragen.
Um, we saw the clip where the police and the portfolio committee had had an engagement and the first question is, are we able to revisit the forestry program um as was suggested before?
Onz het resin wa di police en di commitee heril, chaatet, cha pratat, en onzl chaxin.
Okay, thank you. Um, the second one is, there was a fire on Knoflukskral some time ago um due to just the nature of where we find ourselves, but at that stage, there was no support for the community from the local authorities and we just needed to question that or take note and cognizance of that.
Da was vier wa da, was bi di area war uns blae en ma obda stadium was da nie eh volle koncentrasie, chahir ob hier die vier eetbrekend da.
The last one was just to, um, it's not a question, it's just a note to see that we want to acknowledge that there seems to be a disconnect between a national government all the way to local government due to information or not really transparency, but just um, there's a disconnect between national for the information to reach us on ground level.
Da es gebrak van die nasen, dessen die nasenale regieren en die blasleke regieren. Dat wil sä, da es nie ach gueh, eh werken samens nie, ma uns es nie darum ihre iemand te blamiere nie. Es net genug om de mel, dat da is da gebrak wa da ons da nie.
In conclusion, as per your suggestion, do we support the bill or do we not support the bill? It's rather premature at this stage because the information we have just received, um, so it's neither either or, but we do ask kindly whether we could come back just to further engage the communities and the leadership that wasn't able to be here and if yes, what is the timeframe?
Ons is een ihre posisie nie op posisie om, das darf of nie, das darf nie, ma uns zal nog eh werkt ob die nasenale weisachen swet und es sind wat uns posisierst, dann zal uns ons zelf voorle, voorendu wat an gedunkan wo.
Kai Gangangs, bye danke, amasse.
I thank you very much for all that I've said.
Good morning, um, um, my name's Paul Dutoy. I'm from the Elgin area. I'm a farmer.
Eh molweni ngalinsasa ekamalam ken ko Paul Dutoy, tsuka kulommanza.
Mrs Van der Scafe doesn't know me, but um, I'm obviously one of her neighbors.
Eh kya bonakadake iste ti eh si asindaazu, kodwa ke mnani kumbelo ani wak.
Um, one of the issues that she did raise was about the fires and that's why I'm here.
Eh emiye imiba ke eh yowai kapazela, imiba epateleleni mililo, ilo ndo namdi laapake ukuse nzo shomu.
National government has neglected um the folks of this area rather badly and uh they're um, they have, they have aspirations that I think are very genuine and need to be addressed at some point, not at some point urgently.
Uchulumeende ke kuaselone ke, kubonakala ndoba lenda ole uibe ten go yaba. Kodwa ke abantu balapabona, bana minwenu, kwaye banes ndoba kale lukuseenza.
There just seems to be no urgency from national government to actually do something and move forward with finding a resolution here.
Kya bonakaleke ndoba uchulumeende kaselone ke, akana zo inzo angosoba azines somu ululu nen zu kuumon, ukuse kulungiswe imiba echisibunzi blenda.
Um, basically, the fires that we had in January and February of this year were due to the neglect of national government.
Kocha nyarono fepo are ke sibeno ku kambuka ko mililo apa. Kwaye ke lo ndo ke sibeka sikhomba imine we, uchulumeende kaselone.
The police services aren't doing their job, um, trying to, and I know it's terribly difficult because they don't know where they stand in trying to police the area and um ensure that um fires don't start.
Namaboli sa na woke asonge izanza, eh ba ngo kolektenwe, namazaba bayakwel pitala. Kodwa ke inga kisona za, kubek.
So now I come to the crux of my point. Um, the folks who have occupied that area, they make fires. They make fires to clear the land and they make fires to cook.
Eh abantu ke abaksala kulanda oke bayake benze mililo, ukuse ba pile, ba kuasino kupeka ukuse ba ache.
Unfortunately, in summer, in spring and summer, it's dry and the winds blow and a spark can light the rest of the felt very, very quickly as we saw happen.
Keense ka ke psika ke, kufumase bamzambe ke kutrai, akuko zimvula, ilo ne kwek bangel, ba kubekole mililo ife lay.
National government should have addressed this beforehand and they should have made arrangements that if this is going to be recognized as a traditional area, that proper fire protection can be implemented so that major felt fires do not start. The fires that we had in January and February burnt out a sawmill and burnt some farmers' orchards.
Eh uchulumeende kaselone ke, bekunyanzele, ndoba ensa malu ngusellelo kwa ngooko. Umseke lo ken kocha nyarono fepo are, kubekoko kampuka komlilo, ya kapazela ke nenda oke apo ke kucha alwe is kamo. Uchulumeende ke kaselone ke ye wai nganda le meko, inge geesi.
I've laid a criminal charge against the Minister of Public Works, who is the landlord. I know.
Ye ke nda faka isimanga lo, kumpatiswa, oma mupatisa telile, ongu ye ke ongu mteni mafa, weze misab.
The reason I've laid that charge is for neglect. That uh, the, the act allows, uh, allows, um, well, basically says that the minister can be neglectful of her responsibilities if she does not follow the rules in the current act. I know.
Isisa atuke sokban faka isimanga lo, ndoba kumpatiswa kange alande le, ama solo ya omteeto, kwaye kanga kuasu kukusela, ez meko, ez mililo. Ilo ndo ke ndenda faka isosimanga lo nga kuwi.
She was fully aware of what was going on before the local government elections. She went and canvassed there, canvassed for votes and she didn't take care of what the people's real needs were.
Ebeyazi ke ndoba indono kwenze kubaba pamko nyolo, lo maspala, uye waya paya, eyo kaya infuti. Kwaye ke ebekon da, ndoba kwenze kandoni paya, kulammanza, zindoni nga kipaya, ko kupateleleni mililo.
The Krebao police are busy investigating, but they, I would say that they don't have um the resources or the um, the right people doing the investigation. It's not a very difficult one.
Amapoli sa klake kilke kama kapetu esenza opando, kodwa ke ngo ko, akakuazu kufumani sa ndoba, obani ofanele kleba ani kwe eh ilunga lo loukupanda, le meko, ukuyapambi.
The Krebao Development Agency wants to work with the folks of Knoflukskral, those people with a legitimate expectation.
Ne ahaende kezo puchisoziafu no basi sebenzani, nabada basi misele okupuchisalanda.
We believe that there are solutions and that people can live in harmony with nature.
Siakolelo ke ndoba zigakho nisomu lulu, nabadi futu bangakuazu kupili sana nenda lo isimongi layo.
But we're not going to let the minister off the hook on this one. Uh, she was neglectful and she was feathering her own nest.
Asutumiye ke ngo kumpatiswa ndoba ah, bale ke kleme ko kubakalo, kubemsebenzwa ke, koto akao yao, betan go yabo.
Um, let me be clear. I'm talking about the Minister of Public Works and not the Minister of Department of Foresteries, Fisheries and Environment.
Teata ke kumpatiswa umsebenz yo lulu ndu, ai kumpatiswa lo, wel sebe singa lo namplangi.
And it doesn't help that there is tension between the two ministers.
Ai nosneta ke ndoba ke tinasenke rinda, akunozoluano no kubela pakatiwa.
Um, I, one, one more thing, that if the um, if the police aren't prepared to do their work, somebody else is going to have to do it. Um, we can't afford to have more fires.
Uchulumeende ke ensa misbenzwa wo, kubakaloka sozukunyamezela apa, sibone kuntume ka mililo, kumazelo.
And if the Tervaters Cluf area want to take over the piece of land, perhaps they need to be proactive and start working on cleaning it and making sure that it's nice and neat and tidy and that any structures that are built are built with, with proper um, um, building regulations in mind or, you know, just make sure that the structures are safe. Um.
Eh abantu ke basi knoflos, basi misele, ndoba ba kote landa wo, ifuselele ke ngo kocha.
Thank you very much. I'm unfortunately not going to be able to stay because I've, I've got work to do.
Engosakola, andu tsapsala bandi, nenda opneke nde kui.
Um, with, with due respect, can you kindly meet Chileka there? Um, please finish us with the details of the case. Um, the, the case against the Minister of Public Works, right? Yeah, if we can get that information. Um, we're not taking sides here, but we don't want to take your side or her side. Uh, that information is going to be very helpful uh because we have a meeting uh with the Minister of Public Works and the South African Police on the issue of Rabo next week, Wednesday, next week, Tuesday. Yeah.
Yeah, it's on the 25th.
On the 25th. We have a meeting with the Minister of Department of Public Works and uh, South African Police Services. Uh, so we want to raise this matter with them. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you so much for the intervention. Honorable Bryant was raising the same issue. You see? Then proceed. Welcome.
First and foremost, let me take this opportunity to greet everyone here and saying all protocol observed.
Eh ndingo Aaron Kalbalele, ttsuka kumsangawa se Swellendam.
My name is Aaron Lubalele from the area of Swellendam.
En di lapanjena ndimele ulualuko.
Eh, I am here to speak on the issues of initiation.
Eh imbangba yoka lama nditi, eh umteeto lo ubegweyoyo, usi uriasbopa.
Eh, I am trying to raise an issue that the current act eh does not really help us.
Because tinasi paye ndabeni siyabasa.
Because there in the mountains, we do make fires.
Goku yenze lo ndo kuuti ke ngo ku, ema pumini weto kunga bi komlilo, koba umteeto au fu mekba masbasele paye ema ndabeni.
And then the current act doesn't allow the initiates to make fires and that affects us because the ritual is done in the mountains.
Ngoku si funukonda ke ngo ku, jengba tinasi krenile ilisi goletu, ilisi lenzayu. Kuso kwenze kanjani ke ngo ku, koba yonge lendo is buisela umva, kuitesa lama ndulo.
Eh, it is a custom and a tradition eh that we're used to. Then if we are not allowed to make fires, eh how are we going to go forward with this tradition or custom?
Goku tinasi zoma, si zo kala naati, jengba na bo bezo kala pa kutu, ba batinka mangeto, naati si funa mangeto, koba ez isindo si ballegile kutu.
We are pleading with you to assist us because our rituals and traditions are dear and important to us.
Siakela ke ngo, koba naati sina simbono zetu, ez no kuti naati si sbeke apa, ukuti si jongwe na zo, ba singa hambanjani kupeka pambil because kunda wesis nikwa yongomaspala be tu aznamans.
Eh, we do, we do have suggestions and inputs that we can make here, but where we stay, there is also lack of water.
Goku inye eh ndo ke ngo ku, ndoba umlilo yavuka askuasi naati ukuvele si utrimingela kres, koto siakua si utima umlilo we puma paya. Goku kukona bando abasala kwa la maslati lal, ababasa yo, abanga kuasiu utrimi mililo.
Eh, sometimes we cannot be able to extinguish eh fires when they erupt and there are also some other people who are living in the mountains who are also not able to extinguish fires when they erupt.
Goku indo ye tu basically saifesa tinango kono kuitu. Eh uchulumeende bangasneta, kukoi solopumps, kukamatinge, kukabu opipe, ez indo abano sondesa kutu, ukuti naati si jongu kutu, singa ngetsana njani na.
We do plead with government because there are some equipment like pipes and so on that can be given to us so that when the fires are erupting, we can be able to extinguish such fires.
Koba imbanwendisfese isindo, koba tinasiakua si kuimela into, sinemi niyaka si sili, si salusa banduan, zange kubekoma slata chal.
Eh, it's been years. Eh, we've been, we've been through this tradition eh for years and we've been eh doing this initiation for years.
Goku siakela ke ngo ku, ndjabulela forrel chuba ninigalon.
Eh, I am equally grateful for the opportunity that have been offered by your good service.
Oh. No, uh. We are dead. We are dead. Ya bulisa, ndigusenche, ndigusenya chief oka mkuulu, eh transpaye ndigunozukile, kui tradisionalitasi.
Eh, good, eh, greetings to the meeting. I am senior chief.
Ikamang.
No zukile.
Ya, ikamang ndigunozukile, sa join up cosingo 2011.
We joined the tradisional leadership in 2011.
Sinob, sinemna ki, yo yenjala, kuela kala, si safuna umsala, sakela umsaba ogulima. Kodwa ndango, ogulomshaba, aska pendula, jengba senior chief.
Eh, we have a problem there of poverty. We did ask for a land eh to be allocated eh for us in that community.
And um, abantu entibana, but um duwena aussebenz, fanelba ndinetool ze, kwam, fanelba ndinetools, fanelba ndialima, ndial, ndialfu ya.
People, when they see me as their leader, they are saying, no, you are not doing your job because I am supposed to have equipment so that I can plough the land and so on and so forth.
Kodwa ndigulela ka kuulu, kubakoko, ndala malu ngosipalamenti mshambi, kuso bakona, uku kuula ka ngin, ubekono, moslu ko kuti, bekonidwe petele, pakati wendala ekon.
Eh, I am happy that the parliament eh is here with us. We are grateful, we are hoping that things will be better so that we can alleviate poverty.
Kuba nelkeshal, nelkeshalele, lekove, le lockdown, kelakasha le lockdown, bekufanele kuba, abantu ke kange babenanjala ka kuulu, kuba gutiala safunu kuba balungseli, loba naboma, bafumba ne ukuya banga binenjala eni, ndoba nemisebenzi ingabi.
Even lockdown, we're hoping that people would not go hungry eh because eh is lack of jobs and people are living under eh not good conditions.
Siakela kodwa longe keshas, siakela gomospalaa, akoz tembisoziko iba, ikonidwe za yongo, kodwa indo ebesi tembiso, ebesi, sisi bayo, wumshanti.
Eh, they did promise to build us scrolls eh but were still pleading to get more assistance.
Siakela lo ndo nimile ke ngo.
Eh, that is my submission.
Bulila ka kuulu.
I am thankful.
Nila leka kuse.
Eh, may you have a restful day or a good night.
Kaukuneka wena mapep.
We are casta, we casta iler, the bill.
Ya, ndikasa ka kuulu kalogile ndya.
I support the bill unequivocally.
Eh, then I'm coming to this row. Did I omit somebody? They want to speak?
Okono funuketa kuel talalanga se kunene.
Come to the right.
Ushileyo.
Come to the center. I see the end there. Can you come to the center, please?
Isamchekas.
Then can I get hands from this side? Go to the chest. You can go to the chest, occupy the chest in the middle.
Ba joinapa.
Instead of him using the, the podium. And then help him to stand properly. Why to sit seated though?
Uchulutecha usenipansi, ba wokanyu funukmange nyao, wokanyu ni kwe umboko. I will stand up to this. Eh, uka lama ndbulise, ngapagati. Eh, ndibulise na malu ngu, asipalamenti akoyo apa.
Firstly, let me greet eh everyone here and special greetings to the committee.
Ndibulise, no keba, boonge, basi Overbeck.
And also greetings to the councillors of Overbeck.
Eh, eswasen chiroge ikamalam, timunwabi si Mkyanga.
My name is Monabisi Mkyanga.
Disuka eh Swellendam.
Coming from Swellendam.
What file?
In what file?
Eh, pamko bantinge ne, kui lendo si kuyo apa, di nim, numbuzo ndji, omni.
Before I embark on this subject matter, I have a question.
Ingaba ipalamente, yiye, yiamba, isiakwe zindawi yamba guzo, yiye ikapele ukuti kunabado bangaboniyo, abaa atenda yo ez, ez stations up.
Eh, as the parliament goes around eh in these public hearings, do they take notice of the blind people?
If it so, they know that blind people can't read these things. Uba kunzalo ke fneke bakondo, bana bando bangaboniyo, abakuazu kuafunda lamakrip. Because now, and kuazu follow up because of lendo ipalue apa and iboni no ibon.
It is precisely because I cannot be able to follow up because of my blindness, I cannot be able to see the contents of the bill.
So if ikona i booklet, etile mshambi, eh ipalue, eh you see eh universal prayer code, di eh English, di, di kaila di fuma.
If there's something that is written in a universal prayer call, I would urge that I have searched documents so that I can be able to read for myself.
Because godi kenapanga pagati, karinda searchwa, ndaya etafilini, so, no, aban notice, banga ba, no, this guy is completely blind.
As I was entering the promises, the premises, I was searched and then I could see that they are noticing that I am blind.
So, mandi greteke apu.
Okay, can I come in, my brother, on that one?
Okay.
I want to take responsibility for this. I want to take responsibility for this interpreter.
Eh, mshekaswa amke, jengosalwe committee, ndifuna ke ndoba unitoalise, utanuva, kalemek.
And profusely apologize to you.
Ditoli iseku we, ngo kunka zenzisio.
Eh, South Africa belongs to all who live in it.
Um, South Africa ke ngo, ababonke, abasala, nabapila kuwo.
And that includes you people with disability.
Ikuka ke nani bantu ke ba kubaze ke ngemekwesile.
And we've noticed that eh, you, you have noticed that disability of yours as you were seated there?
Nanjengoba besiteli pasi, yexa kapela, ndoba ikona no, kimeko yo kubaze, ko pilanay.
And it came to our minds.
Saikapeleke lo ndo, jenga man.
And we asked them to take off the mic from wait standing to give it to you.
Eh, sabakela ndoba ke basu se imikele, bakunike utete, ukulenda uselikuwiyo.
I even asked whether you want to speak seated or standing.
Eh, ndapideke ndabosa, ndoba, ingaba mshamo, funa okuteta umi lokani yuselipansi, kusinina.
Because, you know, I want to take responsibility because there's staff members we send to do advance to communities.
Eh, ndifuna okutoliso utanuva, balo kusbesiye nama, kosa wokanye, kaba sebenzwa se palamente, abaye banyikwe utanuva, lokba, ba kuku zelele, indibano, ez ikumi lakunge.
And as they're doing the mobilization, that could have been brought to their attention and brought to our attention.
Da kebe senza, ke misbenzenjalang, kebe sazisile kwa ngooko.
And we'll have definitely made that packaging specially for you.
Enenene ke baba si nalulua, zolo lo shobo, beso kuniki si kobo, esinjaloo, esu so kufunda, okutetangasu.
To meet your needs.
Ukwenzele, ndoba impuno sa akosfese.
It's your right, it's not your privilege.
Eh, lilungu lola ako, awuni kwanueba, koto akalelungu lola ako.
And the team on my left there, I think they've heard your concern.
Di kenseke ile ke ndoba, lava abasebenza base palamente, bayu vile lena kiyako.
They'll make sure that there's a special package for you both in the pamphlet and the actual bill so that it gets eh dispatched to you.
Baso kenseke isha ndoba ke, baso kunika is kobo, ba tumele ipasi letile, ba kenseke isha ndoba, is kobe sinjaloo so kufunda, si afigelela kuwe.
And with the team here in front of you, I think we'll await your input. We will not be finished this thing without you having read and made your required input.
Jenga malu ke palamente ke atetande paya etafilini, naati si zo kuli, linde la ikalolola ako. So kenseke isha ndoba, plentlangani so nawo la kulufo, liu fakal.
I, I hope you'll forgive us for those yet coming.
Eh, siatemba ke nnumshan, ndoba uzoskolis, uzoskolela ke eh, ngalo, galumpaza monyana.
Once you are done, Chileka will come to you.
Basi sikwile ke, uno bala we, committee le, usis Chileka uzosakuwe.
And take your details.
Atate, ndukatra zako.
And she will make sure that all these documents that you need are dispatched to you.
A kenseke subake, lonke, onke lamakripa, funeka yo, ayafuku yawafumaana.
I hope that will suffice.
Di yatemba ndoba no koyokwanele sek.
And then you'll accept our apology to that. The intention was not to offend you.
Usitolele mshekas, kakulu kakuu.
It was just an oversight on our part.
Ibe impaza monje, kule tita.
We recognize you as people living with disability.
Eh, si anitapela, si namkeela nani ke, jenga bando va pila, nemekozo kubaze.
And then we don't have to be reminded time and again that you exist.
Basi funba, si soloko si kunjuzwa ke, umshane zolo, kemeke sinjaloo, esu zitonda yo naati.
I, I hope you'll find it close in your hearts and forgive us for this omission.
Siatemba ndoba no koyokuazu, wa usitolele eh kakulu mshekas. Okay, okay, ndabulela, eh, ndabulela shan.
Thank you very much, especially for that explanation. I am actually eh, I, I agree eh with your explanation.
Eh, mandinge ne, kendi men.
Let me get into the subject matter.
Eh, jengba jen, disuka kwalala lualuko.
As I am coming representing the side of the initiates
That is why we leave our communities and go to specific places so that we can have such prayers.
So that we can be able to communicate and connect with God in the forest. We don't go on specific seasons, even in winter, we do go to make such prayers in those mountains or forests. That is where now the issue of fires come to the fore.
Because when we go there during those times, sometimes it's very cold and it's snowy. That is why we decide sometimes to make fires so that we can be warm.
Coming on the issue of land, we have realized that as Christians, we are the ones who are not looked after.
I'll speak for myself as Tembeka. In my church, I normally conduct prayers in my house. There are various diseases that are happening. Then it forces us now to converge, to convene our prayers in those small rooms. In Philistop, we are not allocated land and that makes things difficult for us. Because now it allows us now to be together in a very small space. We are facing that difficulty and we are asking whether or not the minister can intervene. We do pray so that we cannot have such criminals called amapara para. We pray to God that this situation must end. Because they are unemployed and they resort to criminality. We would like, or would love that we can create job opportunities so that people can embark on this issue of being firefighters. So that they can get employment in this field of firefighting. As I've alluded before, that the situation compels us to go and pray in the mountains and in the forest. If we can open job opportunities on this field of firefighting, then we'll be able to help people who will safeguard should any eruption happen. We would like to get workshops on the issues of fires in fields and forests. So that we can be able to be equipped. As a result, we came here unaware of such issues that are affecting our daily lives. We urge that in our areas, we can have workshops and educational programs. Because at the end of the day, our youth, they resort to drugs and alcohol because they don't have anything to do. I support the bill all heartedly. On the other hand, would like to get support from what I have alluded to before. May God bless you. I thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Gia du Melissa, se chava. Kinitu Melissa kaufela kaltzatzilina. Au mutu otlele runa gamuna. Kimu diimu oye zengli tazilina. Ube na liko pano ya bonda de ribomi kashiku. Tianbulisa eksinji. Kotan to lukatiko nomoya waino ele.
I greet you all this afternoon in the name of God and the Holy Spirit.
I am a Sutu by bond and mother is a Sutu and the father is a Sutu. Grandmother and grandfather are also Sutu. My grandfather is kimutlakwana. My grandmother is a kwenya. My mother, she's a, I'm sorry to mention this. Colored people, I don't, I don't say dirty word. My mother, she's... Also born by king. I am a king from far away. In Maluti in Lesutu. Our fallen fathers, they were big fight between pastakwana libakwena. I have a long history. Tianbulisa.
I greet you. I am accompanied by the chief from the Kosa side and other traditional chiefs from the Shrubi side.
We initiate schools.
We conduct initiation schools.
Quatikas?
Under Tikas.
A cap?
Here in Cape Town.
Sepansko William.
We are under William.
We are situated in over strength and over back.
We are situated dwelling in over strength and...
Over back.
And over back.
Iswili she hermanas?
Iswili she hermanas as well.
Senza lomsebinz.
We are conducting these initiation schools.
In Naisna, senza lomsebinz, nama koi san.
In Naisna, in collaboration with the Koisan nation, we are conducting these initiations.
It was the first time they do this. Anybody who want a piece of land must via the offices of municipality. The doors is open there. There is a department of sports and culture inside municipality. Every municipality.
The government actually stationed a representative who will be able to look after the issues of initiation. In all the municipalities, we do have such officials.
And Cape nature is there? For the training. Fire training. And if you don't have water, they make plans to... If you want to use the piece of land, they've got everything to come and help us. And it's free to do that for us. I support the bill. Why? There is a reason. Philistop, Franz Hook, Amaplas, I seven, eight.
In Philistop and Franz Hook, we've got seven to eight farms. We have got a mountain that is dedicated to the Sutu, Sutu people.
And the piece of land, it was very hot and umshaba, umshaba waacha, Amaplas waacha, ingomo waacha.
The farms and the cattle got burnt because the season was dry.
And it cost about sixty something million.
That whole process costed about sixty something million.
But our government... Our government is a government who can hear, who can listen. And the police came and asked us what did happen. We said they must check everything. We cannot run away. From the first day in the initiation school. Fire is there. Until the last day. But there is control of the fire. We have another thing now to work on the field we have given by the government. We plan and have a meeting with the law enforcement agent. To bring these students, they don't have work. To implement the field workers range. Protect the life of the children in the bush. Protect the proteas in the bush.
That is our agreement that we have with our municipality.
In Western Cape, it's only two municipalities. I don't, I don't support DA. I have to say thanks to DA. They give us piece of land. Sutus is nine hundred and ninety hectares.
Nine hundred and ninety hectares.
Kosta's, they have seven hundred and ninety hectares. In Yemen and Arde. Plot is five eight five. Defense force is also there. Law enforcement agent is also there. Oh, they are stinking, big, stinking like anything. Pharmacy is there. I'm sorry, don't fight me. Today, I'm so very happy. I'm standing in the platform of the Parliament of Western Cape, of South Africa. We're always standing here and discuss with Minister Barbara Chris under the fishery department. He knows me, I have a big mouth. Where we standing now, there is a piece of land where black people start. I told him about it. We need factory there. Here in Houston. It was built, that land belongs to colored and the black people. They were united people. The separation, it was apartheid government. It remove us. From our fallen father land. The land is in our hands. I'm going to leave now. Do shalla, shalla panzi?
And sit down?
Don't fight with petrol and the tire and the matches. Just use a pen and the paper. That is the way of fighting and winning your freedom. Thank you.
My name is Apiewe. I'm coming from Deep Waters Club under the municipality in Kalaton. I am equally grateful to stand in this podium. I do support the bill though. Also, if the department can follow up on what has been alluded to in the bill. I'll give an example that we do have schools that are in rural areas like Kalaton. And other areas. My question is that does the department go and make awareness campaigns about the dangers of fire fires? If that's the case, at what stage now is the department embarking on that process? We must also look at this issue broadly and also consider children. If we don't go and make awareness campaigns about the dangers of fire, that will cause a great danger. In many, in many instances, we do find children who are living alone and they play with fire most of the time because they are no parents. Does the bill also consider the people who are mentally disturbed in this context? And also those who live in the forest? Those who burn the forest? Why doesn't the department, this department collaborate with... Why doesn't the department collaborate with a relevant department that deals with people who are mentally disturbed? We have many instances of people who are mentally disturbed who are living in the forest. People who are mentally disturbed can do anything that will temper with nature because they are not aware. I will support the bill if the department can come up with a framework. Because we've got a lot of people who are mentally disturbed who are living, who are wandering around. My suggestion therefore is that the department must gather all the people who are mentally disturbed. The department must cook for them. They must be able to wash them so that these people, you don't find them in an area whereby they'll go to the forest and cause fire and cause fires. There is a curriculum of agriculture in schools. This department must collaborate with the Department of Education. So that people can be educated about the dangers of fires. And the nature at large. If the department can embark on that. I will support the bill all heartedly. I thank you. Both of you gentlemen who just made presentations?
No, 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 these ones who are seated here.
Pardon me, the ones who are seated here in the row?
They are noting themselves.
He has borne.
They have noted themselves.
Or you guys, you actually did without being concentrated by the table?
Yeah, so nobody said you must sit there. You just invited yourself. Right? No, 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 sit, bro. It's okay. It's okay. It's okay. I don't worry, both of you, you don't worry. But I'm just reminding you.
I'm looking at this matter. You are live on TV. People will make a mockery of you.
But then, on behalf of the chair, let me check if there are people who still want to speak. This is the very last round. The first two is here. Are there people who still want to make inputs? Okay, going once, twice, gone.
You have the platform?
Dag sein ali lede hi vadahteen woordig. Endanki farii. Komitie wat vadahtiesthiret umte kom liester na os pleidoye. Endwat os opi hartet. Di initiativ wat parlament vadahthi vorley an di gene hi teen woordig. Os het gekijk da na as gemeenschap hi van hi ri overberg street.
Thank you to the committee. We have considered this as the inhabitants or people who are staying in this area.
My name is Richard Maria.
My name is Richard Maria. I am an affiliate to the Koisan group of South Africa.
Under the mother board of the KCHTC.
Under the mother board of the KCHTC. The late President Nelson Mandela had an agreement with this group.
Under the National Koisan Council.
Under the National Council of the Koisan. I am here today to raise a serious issue affecting our community where I am staying. As you have heard already, where I am staying, we are staying there with residents of in the vicinity of four thousand. There were great fire burns at the area previously and from our municipality. There is no assistance that we did get. I do not want to waste much time besides saying that those people in the vicinity of four thousand were greatly affected by the burnings there in the area. I am not standing only as a Koisan leader here. I am also standing here as a citizen of South Africa or the country. of South Africa, the country.
Ma wat for my baiye beterenswaardig was, in, in komerwekend was, was hi slake pas obu ri koi in san gemeenskappe te hoop gesnelwat, of hoop angebietwat, dat is richtig wa beterenswaardig. As hi ri bol wat hi vadahty hi an os kom vorle, willest og vadahty an hi le fra, eh, play, playdoyerig, om toch te kik na hi ri eh probleme va alin os gemeenskappe.
As we are having this bill here today, we would want to appeal to you that we should be considered our residents, the people that stay where we are staying.
And then et ten laste, os mensen kani omat hale baiye van hale struktieren afgebrandet, baiye van hi ri gesine op Knofloks Karal, het baiye van hale, a laste besitzingsverlor, identiteitsdokumente, declaratie, meebels.
As a result of the burnings that took place at our area, many our residents lost documents of importance of their, and their furniture and all other cloth material.
And tot owe de, sus playdoyet, os hi fra gefra, an baiye delegations instantsis, ti lokal municipalityt etos genader, om ons te jaap, om hi ri mensen se levens te herva, te herbou.
We even approached the local municipality where we are staying and we asked for assistance from the municipality to assist us, the needs of our people be considered.
Omat us baiye oergarde, op Knofloks Karal haidiglik, ik praat specifiek van Knofloks Karal.
I am speaking about this Knofloks Karal as we are in this area where we are staying.
Baiye van hi ri, baiye van hi ri oergarde, vi hale besitzingsverlorit, moet nou bai ander mensen thuis gaan, fi di reden dat hale nie hale pluk plekkan, herbou.
Many of the elderly people who lost their belongings or residences now is faced with a situation where they had to go to people in the neighborhood as they could not fix their properties again on their own.
Os wil toch met dit gesee, an hi ri paneel wat for ogen, vadahty hi voros is, willest vi in, in alle erens fra, kom jaap ons hi menslikke terugbrink na ons oergarde. Hi is hi de delegatie wat vadahty hi gestieris om te kom liester na os playdoye.
As you are here, as a delegation sent to come and listen to our problems or difficulties, we want to appeal for assistance from you.
Juist met die fire.
Particularly concerning the fires that.
Bhaiye danki.
I say thank you very much.
Goe dag, ik is Julian Boer, ik is an itiwa tuskloof municipality area.
I am Julius Blue, I am in the Tiwaters area.
Ik zien hi ri geleentek, ook as an opportunity, wa ons ander aspekte kan ansprek.
I see this as an opportunity, where could, we could address other or certain issues.
I do believe prevention is better than kill.
Ik vroer des beter om yourself te beskeren, as om eh med diese behandeling uit te dien.
Op daenoot, willeke voorselrag an i committee.
Eh, with that aim, I want to make a request to the committee.
So sozial wiet fial brande voor oersak groot schades.
As we all know that these fire bands are causing great damage.
Ma ik wille versuikerig an i committee.
But I want to appeal or ask the committee.
Om te oeweeg, as us kik na di werk, most it's super specifiek ona di jig, om ten minstel jigdigis antestel.
Over view and particularly address the ju, the youngsters.
Mhale antestel om te werk in i bergen, om te kik, om te verwoed, da da fial brande kan klaaswen.
To say that they would work on the mountains to prevent all these fire burnouts that would occur there.
Bhaiye danki, det is all.
I say thank you very much, that is all that I wish to say.
Thank you so much, that was sweet and short. Then, there are issues that were raised, I passed by Mr. Smith and Tim's table there, they asked me not to disturb them, they were busy, noting what you were raising. And then eh Mr. Kaldenace, Reynard, you are here now, Miss, can I see where you are? Okay, there are issues that are local, that were raised by the communities in relation to the fires, I've also seen the working on fire team here, is there something that you want to raise before I allow Mr. Kaldenace, then you will be followed by the DFFE team? Are you, is there anything you want to raise or you are covered? Come to the fore. And then Mr. Kaldenace, you should be coming to the fore, then Mr. Smith and Tim, come to the fore as well, in that order. You should stand up and start yourself.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen.
You must introduce yourself and the position you hold.
Okay.
Where you come from, as in when you talk to some of the issues that have been raised by the communities.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, um, the forum, the panel, my name is Melanie Dathisurdi, I am the Working on Fire General Manager for the Western Cape, and I would just like to address the matter of the one gentleman that requested additional education and making people aware of fires, currently Working on Fire is a PTY limited company, private company, that actually enforce um education as well as youth development and trained and employed youth to actually embark and fight fires, wildland fires in the mountains, so um within this district, we actually embark on education programs that is actually adjacent with, or partnered up with the Department of Education, so we do actually engage with schools and ECDs in the communities in order to assist and make them aware of um fires and how to protect themselves and making sure that they do not start fires, so I just, I hope I explain to all of them um what Working on Fire is about, and I think um our colleagues at the back, the, the fire chiefs, will actually also elaborate that we do engage with the FPAs as well as the municipalities with regards to fires, thank you.
Thank you Chair, um, I'm Reynard Kaldenace, I'm the Chief Fire Officer for Overberg District Municipality, so the areas of concern that was raised, the Knofloks Karal area, some of the Swaddam area, uh, definitely Ghanadendal and Filistor falls under my jurisdiction. Chair, the, the points of interest is definitely Knofloks Karal, um, and yes, we went through a very rough patch with Knofloks Karal, but I must say that, to say that Knofloks Karal is not getting services is not quite correct, we went through a history with Knofloks Karal, where we met with the leadership right up to the point and we provided services right up to the point where due to certain people in Knofloks Karal, and unfortunately, it's always the, the innocent that suffer, we were forced out of Knofloks Karal as a fire service, so for three to four months, Knofloks Karal was considered what we call a red area, where we could not deploy fire services into Knofloks Karal due to the activities there, so there was definitely a period, yes, unfortunately, where we could not render services, but that said Chair, Knofloks Karal is a community and the fire services are there to serve communities, we do not have a dog in the fight whether they should be there or not, that's not our decision to make, so we have started engaging with the people of Knofloks Karal, we have resumed services in Knofloks Karal, so if there is a fire right now in Knofloks Karal, our services will respond, our mediation teams that we deployed from the district side has given us indication that Knofloks Karal has calmed down considerably, the element that was responsible for attacking our fire services seems to be either gone or under control, so to answer your question on that one, Knofloks Karal is being serviced, um, we will resume the, the, the engagements that we had with the Queen previously, eh, also to look at public education and to help um train volunteer firefighters in Knofloks Karal. Chair, with regards to the person that also commented on Knofloks Karal with the law enforcement and no law enforcement etcetera, um, there is a way that we will deal with it, we understand what the people of Knofloks Karal need to do, and since the very first intervention where we asked people to stop fires, I must say that the amount of fires got less and less. Chair, then um with regards to Ghanadendal, Mr. Adams's comments on the Ghanadendal volunteers, yes, Ghanadendal is farm thirty-nine, but it's again, similar to Knofloks Karal, it's considered a community and we have to serve the community, but just a correction, the community is not served from Kalidin, there is a fire truck uh situated in Grayton, which is there to serve the whole Grayton, Bereval, Ghanadendal community. Chair, we are working with the volunteers, um, we have identified twenty volunteers, we are from the district municipality in the final process of acquiring um PPE for the volunteers, as soon as the PPE is delivered to them, which will be in the next three weeks, because we're trying to get this in prior to fire season, eh, they will also receive training, um, they don't have to be registered as a firefighting association because they fall under the Overberg, Greater Overberg Fire um, um Prevention Association as it is, and as the fire services, we are there to support them, as I said, we've done the meetings, we, um, and we will be looking at them, just with regards to some of the items mentioned in Filistor, and Chair with the initiation schools, I think Cape Nature and the Filistor area, if I remember correctly, we did assist with that, we understand the traditions, and we will do our best to assist and see how we can facilitate everyone from the religious groups to initiation schools to even ever needs to work, operate and make fires in our areas, that we can do that safely. Chair, I think I've covered um most of the issues that, that I can directly address, thank you.
Then, over to you sir.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, my name is Lester Smith, I'm the Chief Fire Officer of Overstrand Municipality, so from our side, um, yes, we also recognize the traditional leaders, um, hence the reason why we also have the project with the leaders, um, what we, as a municipality did, we consulted with our manager, um, of sports and culture, uh, to ensure that we put management programs in place to assist the, the traditional leaders. From our side, we also believe that fire is everyone's fight, so we also make use of the expanded Public Works Program, where we make use of uh the members to also uh participate in our firefighting program, we also, um, in the next two weeks, we will also introduce twenty-one Crisalis uh members to also assist us with fires, and all of that members come from the community, so, Overstrand Municipality is a local municipality, we also work closely with the district municipality as well as the Fire Protection Association, so between ourselves and the Fire Protection Association, there is regular training uh projects that we also run with them, and also assistance between us, uh, the district municipality and the FPA, so from our side, we really engage with communities to ensure, also to assist with fire breaks, also if we see there is high-risk areas, also to assist that landowners and also provide training for the farmworkers or communities in specific areas, so in a nutshell, that is what Overstrand Municipality brings to the table, thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, honorable members of the Portfolio Committee, uh, the community of um Kalidon, sorry, I'm in um, Western, uh, and then also to the traditional leadership, my name is Winston Smith from the Department of Forestry, Fisheries and Environment. I've got two inputs to make, I think the first question that was raised is the enforcement and the roles and responsibility of the traditional leaders, in the past, sorry, in the current bill, it's only the police and the fire officer that can enforce the act, the amendment now makes provision for the traditional leaders, but if one continue reading the, the, the amendment, it is where they are trained and competent, so what we will do is, we will then provide the training to show they incompetent and then they can then enforce the act, and with that uh training, they will know all the rules and regulations and all what need to be done, so they can enforce the act, so it's not throwing them out to the wolves, but that we will hold, hold hands in that regard. I think it's musta the way that raised the issue of taking government to, to, to court for, for non-compliance, I think it is right to do so, if you, I think his rights has been uh trampled on, but I think it's, the act is applicable to all landowners and especially also state as a owner, so if you don't comply, I think it's, then there will be uh consequences to that. About the initiation, initiation fire, and a colleague just before me spoke about it, also another amendment in the act is, under the current act, when the danger rating is high, no fires, and the reason is obvious, the danger rating is high, fires, you've got problems, but what the amendment now say, there can be exception for special, for special um reasons, but that exception must be writing and by the minister under certain conditions, and to do that, for example, like initiation fire, then you have to consult with the FPA, and then the rules will be, be, be stipulated, and how can we go about, and I think it's quite a good amendment, so that will then also cut down on, on the incidence of, of fire, and uh so, if one work then with the FPA, that will help us and assist us. I think uh the colleague from WAF talked about the awareness on their side, the department also do, do fire awareness um through our offices and our regional offices, we also got the PDMC, the municipalities and volunteers, there's quite a number of people that's doing uh awareness, but I think we can do, do more, from this hearing, there's a, there's a, again, there's a need for us to, to step up and make sure everybody is aware of the dangers of fire, so I think it's, awareness is one part, but also the compliance is other, and those two need to be, to work together if you want to prevent fial fires, and then in closing, um, it's now October, uh, within two months, a fire season is gonna start, and it's gonna be, I think, another, another hectic fire season for us, um, and I, I would just say you that is, um, we have to be responsible because the fire starts with us, we in control, and we need to make sure that we don't let fires that we cannot control, thank you Chair.
For your responses, can I hand over to Councillor Class to deal with the other issues that are political, that also need the overall district's response, over to you, Councillor.
Thank you, thank you Chair Person, the, the officials, I must say, thank you so much for the issues they've dealt with, I think there are two or three matters that hasn't been responded to that I want, wanna quickly go to. I, I want to just give a shared experience, eh, there is someone from Filisdor, Tembeka, who says that they are Christians and themselves, when they go and pray in the mountain, they experience challenges, maybe if we can use some shared experiences, I, I recall that in Overstrand, a similar challenge, okay? I recall that in Overstrand, a similar challenge occurred where people will go to the mountains at night, then fire will be done. When they do fire, there will then be implications around that. The intervention into that was that firstly, they must organize themselves as ministers so that they speak from one voice. The second issue, the municipality said, it is not our intentions to stop your activities. But the problem is that if you go there, you make fire, you leave it there. You think that you've put it off, but in reality, you have been put it off, you move to another place. Let us come on a round table, let us sit down, let us identify areas where we'll sit, we'll look at them, we'll say it is safe to do this here and then we do this there. And that process is ongoing. Maybe in Felisdorf, that is something you can look at. But the biggest challenge, also you spoke again about the issue of land. It stresses frustrating. We try as councillors, especially through the interactions, there was an initiative where we said that we're going to set aside about five plots for churches. They couldn't agree on any. Fires were starting to a point that they came to us and said, rather not give all of us. So the issue of the association, not only for traditional leaders, but even for pastors to talk from one voice. Because you go to areas, you try to assist, but it becomes impossible to assist because when you get there, everybody want land to put a church. Now, if you can go to any area, you look how many churches want land, it's impossible, you can't do it. So we need to get to a point where we are able to sit down, we are able to engage and come as a unity to the municipality and negotiate and then we take it from there. I think we can achieve something, but if you are divided, it becomes almost impossible. I should have, I should have done the salute. For the Koi, I don't know what the salute is and I feel very guilty as a local leader for not knowing that. But at least for the traditional leaders in Hansbach, I can do the salute. Ah, Nozukile! Ah, Nozukile! Mama mandi bulaleka koon. Ben di tetile imeko yokuti gwaefneka sise kuni sipinde si sitete. Ben di kendaiva imeko yokuti nifuna uku lima, besi vile nomeko. Ilondo se sakensekisa uku tinieza apa. Kotwa ke zizi ndo ezo egufneka ni tete nati. Zizi ndo ekufneka ni sbize ukuze singo role nani, ukuze si fuma nani. Kotwa uku lima abantu bakuti if i koni ndo nobanga likaba angakwazukumsha. Ubanga bi koni ndo ayaziyo uku lima. Au tingi noktini, so diya bulaleka koon. Lastly, Chairperson, on the issue of the initiation schools, I like what has happened, Chairperson, in the area where we are. The fire chief Lister who was here, what they have done proactively, they have engaged with the initiation school. So when they go with the initiates, they are there. They look at the fire breaks, they create the fire breaks themselves. They even negotiate where fire can be made or where fire cannot be made. Even to a point that on the last day, when the initiate must leave the place and there is burning, people do not burn it out themselves. It is the firefighters that are coming and they assist them. I think what is important is for us to duplicate that. I remember when I engaged with the association, with the leadership of the initiates in school in Swelendam. I said to them, through our fire department as Overberg District Municipality, we need to talk. I spoke about the provision of water, where we can move water, we move it to where your initiates are. Fortunately, in Swelendam, cause as you are just opposite the fire, the fire department. I'm sure we can make sure that we do something. Nje tina masi ngoko le, single councillor, naabu councillor. There are two councillors from Swelendam. We can talk, engage them. Between us, we can talk and make sure that we meet you halfway. If one must move water temporarily to your area, we can provide water so that there is water. But it must be in an enclosed situation because initiate cannot get access to that water. We must just sit down and see how do we deal with those issues. Thank you so much, Chairperson.
Thank you, Councillor Class. Thank you, I will then also for those responses. And then can you keep on informing your communities on the good things that you are doing? That would be nice. Let then ask, okay. You've heard the responses and the issues that you was raising here. So those are the matters that, some of them that you raised. There was an issue with Public Works that we asked for a case number. The beauty about it on these other matters, we have developed a template wherein we've been meeting with communities, you are the ninth province we are meeting today. As I said earlier, as and when you raise issues with us, we have a platform when we go back to our committee meeting wherein we call the relevant departments to come and respond on the issues as raised. That's why earlier I introduced so many committee secretary. It's only for that reason to document all the issues that you are raising. And then the beauty about it, as you've heard our whip, we're having a meeting next week with Public Works, Forestry and Agriculture and the police to deal with all these matters. So it assists, we are also empowered. All the time when we meet with people, it's not that you are only raising complaints with us. You are also raising some valid inputs that we take home. And it also make us to then do our oversight better. To the colleague with disability, my whip here is committing to meet with his counterparts in the Portfolio Committee on Women, Youth and People with Disability. And then I think you have raised the issue that we need to elevate it. Like I apologized upfront, I want to do it again. Moving forward, it's a lesson to all of us because we need to know who our audience is, whom are we going to meet. That's why that office that does advance should be able to give us that figures before we come in here so that we know whom are we going to meet. And then at the end also, we'll have to always make provision for that in case we have a situation like this. And then I must say on my side, those are the issues that you have raised, we have a mechanism to follow up. That's why you heard me saying, find more time to do outreach with your people. And then can I then hand over to Honorable Person to share with us what will be the way forward and also deal with the closing remarks? Over to you colleague.
Thank you, Chairperson Feits Mutambi. G'achtaljedev, vani komiteer, erbare Bryant, erbare Modisi, erbare Gansho, unwonis van Houston, Swelendam, Agales, Thirbatusklof, Overstrand and for all the mensen van Knoflalks Krall. Raatslid Klaas, Brandweerdienster and Working on Fire, members of the Board of Nozukile Traditional House led by Chief Nozukile Alicia Mbanyarow, traditionelle laiers van i Koison Gemeenschap geleide akunengan Faslin van de Skae, Vergesel, der Senior Operwurf Moart van de Skae and Operwurf Cornelius Boeter. Baia danke für jele delname. Die Komitee het nou jele inzette sorgvolda geleiste. Die Department van Bosbouw, Visereien en Omgevingszaken zal jele kwesties aansprek. Die Komitee zal jele inhoud van die wetzonwerpen spreken en jele mondelingse en skrifterlijke inzetten aannemen. Die Komitee zal een verslag opstrek aannemen in een parlement de wateer. Daarna wordt die wetzonwerpen naar de Nationale Raad van Provincies verwijst wanneer de Nationale Raad van Provincies de wetzgebende proces zal beginnen. Nu wordt die wetzonwerpen naar de president verwijst als aanbeveling wanneer dit wetzaal wordt. Baia danke.
So far, you have been the best audience I've ever had. I've told you we've moved across all the nine provinces, eh? You have been the best. I mean in terms of discipline? I didn't hear anyone of you howling at any other person? That's why I'm saying you deserve a round of applause. Thank you so much colleague, thank you so much. Claudine, are you still there? No, no, can you see the gentleman standing there? As we close, him and his team, they are going to direct you where to go to get your refreshments? I should think this meeting then gets closed? Thank you so much for your attendance. And I wish you well as you go back to your respective municipalities. Thank you so much.
The gentleman is saying the behavior is because of the good seafood they are enjoying. That's why they behave so well. The good behavior is as a result of the good seafood we are enjoying in this area.